Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to Albany City Council Meeting, Wednesday, April 23rd of 2025 at 6:00 PM. I now call the meeting to order. Would you please all join me in the pledge of allegiance?
By the United States of America. A nation on the ground.
Thank you. Before we start roll call, Counselor McGee is coming in virtually, so that's why she's not here this evening. So would you please do a roll call? Is it McKenna or Eric doing it?
I'll be doing it tonight. Counselor McLeod.
Present.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor Nezor.
Present.
Counselor Thompson.
Here.
Counselor Monague.
Here.
Counselor McGee.
Present.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Next on tonight's agenda, item three, adoption of the consent calendar. Counsel.
I move we approve the consent calendar as written.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Well, thank you very much, Counsel. Motion passes. Next is number four, presentations and ceremonies. First up, item eight is vocational rehabilitation presentation by Carrie Hall from ODHS, pages thirty-nine to forty-six in your packet. And I've added Albany Visitors Association Director, Executive Director Rebecca Bond for some presentation as well after that. So please. Please use the microphones. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Carrie Hall, and I am a Vocational Rehabilitation Counselor. I work with for the Fair of Oregon, but I work in Cleveland, Oregon and Albany. Vocational Rehabilitation is an agency that provides services for people with disabilities. Usually they have barriers to work, and we also serve adult and student, some fourteen to twenty-four. And what we're looking for is seeing how we can collaborate and partner with business in Albany and how we can improve, open the door for individual with disability. And this is.
Hello, I'm Monica Deckert. I'm a workforce and business coordinator with Vocational Rehabilitation, and I'd like to share what VR can offer businesses. So we offer businesses support with recruiting, training on disability in the workplace, and consultation, and all of that is no cost to businesses. And I can go a little bit more into detail about that. Thank you. I jumped ahead an extra slide. Forgive me. There we go. Thank you. So as far as VR services for business, we have a dedicated team to partner and collaborate with business called the VR Workforce Team. That's what I'm a part of. And we offer assistance to business to get to know them and to really build long-term partnerships with them to help them thrive. So again, we offer hiring guidance. We help dispel myths or misconceptions about hiring and working with people with disabilities. We can assist with exploring reasonable accommodations or assistive technology to help retain employees who become disabled or are disabled. We offer, again, training on disability in the workplace and topics related to that. Those trainings are customized and can be in-person or over Zoom. We offer consultation, again, for reasonable accommodations or disability questions and resources and referrals related to specific disabilities or specific business needs. So we can connect you with, like, the Small Business Association or the Northwest ADA Center to answer questions and support. For a little more detail on the trainings, again, those can be customized for the audience. So whatever the business need is around disability in the workplace, we customize a training for you and your employees. Again, those can be done virtually or in Zoom. Any number of employees are welcome to join. For the consultation, again, those technology solutions, we can connect you with resources for those assistive technologies to help individuals be successful in the workplace. We can offer information on financial incentives such as the Work Opportunity Tax Credit, which is a financial incentive for businesses who hire folks with disabilities and also a number of other populations. And we can provide guidance and assistance on finding low- or no-cost reasonable accommodations that not only help individuals with disabilities in the workplace, but can help any employee thrive and be successful in the workplace. And to do these trainings, we partner with Oregon Commission for the Blind. Oregon Commission for the Blind is the expert on low vision, vision loss, and blindness. VR is every other disability. So together we partner and make sure that all Oregonians with disabilities are covered. And now I can hand it off to Carrie.
So who becomes eligible for VR services is based when they have a documented disability. It can be from a learning disability all the way to a physical disability or mental health. It just depends how their disability is a barrier to a workplace. Some of the examples are people may not have a consistent work history. They're getting fired every three months because of their mental health not stable. How do we support them so they can get back into the workforce and being stable with their job? Our goal is to kind of address their barriers and see how we can make them successful and get them back into the community. Some of the services that may need help with obtaining work is saying that if you have a hearing loss, one of the examples that a lot of people face is that they can't afford hearing aids. Hearing aids are really expensive. Insuring do not cover them. VR can potentially help them depending if it is a barrier and the employer do not allow them to have accommodation or get the support that they needed. Also, are they authorized to work in the United States? So what my job is, I gather information about their disability from either from high school or whether it be adult, because their disability can be impacted at any age. We help them learn about their disability. One example I have had, I had a client that was, had a heart attack and was a electrician for a long time and wanted to work part-time with SFDI, but he could not go back to that job because he cannot work full-time. And so one of the things I had to do, I asked him, have you accepted your disability? And he said, no. And so I helped him kind of work with that so I can help him find a new career goal. So that's part of creating a plan for their employment. And my goal for my client is for them to be successful. And so that is with collaborating with partnership and helping them get back into the workforce. We help them with job exploration and searching for career goals. Do they need training to get back to that job or within that career goal? Do they need special equipment, economic devices, like chairs or special keyboards or whatever it may be? We can help them explore that because sometimes it's a hardship for business, and we can come in and help them with that. We help them with interviews with feeling confident because when you have a disability, that does impact your mental health because with depression and anxiety of having other people accept them. And then after having benefit consultation with SFDI and SSI because they don't know how that can impact them with their work, they can't work a full-time schedule, so they have to have a part-time schedule. So having an employer not understanding what that means, they're like, I want you to work more hours. No, I can't because it impacts my disability benefit and I will lose it. They need it for Medicare and Medicaid to help them provide that support. So it just depends and it's individualized, and so that's where we help them.
So if there are any questions or if there's a business that wants to schedule a consultation or training, there is how to reach Vocational Rehabilitation, which will connect you to one of our team members, and also Oregon Commission for the Blind as well if it's specific to blindness or loss of vision.
And I wanted to clarify that Vocational Rehabilitation do not work with, well, we do work with Commission of the Blind, but they are separate agency because there's separate funding.
Counselors, do you have any questions? Counsel?
The work you do. This is important.
So did you leave flyers or information for us that we can give to business owners?
I have some flyers, yes.
So if you can, give them to our deputy clerk or city clerk or recorder, excuse me, language change. And I'd like to have some in my office because I work with people with disabilities in my work. So thank you very much for being here. No comments or anything?
Just thank you for being here. It's interesting to hear.
Thank you.
Good to hear.
Thank you.
And I'd never heard of it before until Carrie came to my office with her folks, and it was like, wow, this could help our community because there are people here that have disabilities that may need your services. And also you can help the businesses learn about working with folks with disabilities. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, I did want to mention that as a disabled veteran, I've done the Vocational Rehabilitation program through the VA, and I was wondering if you ever work with veterans who go through the VA Voc Rehab program?
We don't, I don't normally work with them because they have a different pocket fund of money as well. And so they have their own funding, then they provide different services that we do, but it's kind of similar work as we do. So we're just more of like a general. And then they understand more of the VA part, but we don't understand that part. So we try to have support in different areas. But we deal with our clients through VA for support in that area.
Okay. It sounds like a similar program. So that's great. Thank you for that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you. Is that it, Counsel? We're all done? Thank you very much for your presentation today.
Thank you for letting us.
It's also in our packet, so we appreciate it.
Yeah, well, thank you very much.
So the next presentation is our Executive Director of our Albany Visitors Association, Rebecca Bond, and you're still the president, correct?
Yeah.
Connor McLean. This is add. I added this to the agenda.
Mayor Alex Johnson and city council members, thank you for the opportunity to share with you the results of one of our latest projects. We'll start with a one-minute video.
Cool, huh?
Great.
We were thrilled to get a competitive grant from Travel Oregon for twenty-two, 2023 through 2025 for accessible inclusive tourism promotion through website, video content, and database design. And it's funded through state lodging tax dollars. It was a $98,000 grant for a two-year project to revamp our Albany website to be more accessible, to secure data, and to create more content with video, all with a lens for inclusion and accessibility. It was quite a learning experience for us, especially the website going back and forth and all the design work that has to happen on the backend for it to be more accessible for everyone. But we're pleased to have a better understanding of what our visitors need, and we think this was a really good project for our community. Travel Oregon extended our grant to allow us to work within Chroma, who makes glasses for people who are colorblind. And we were able to give two pair away as a promotion. And then we also have those glasses available at the Albany Visitors Association for anyone who would like to borrow and use them while they're here. The grant allowed us to capture valuable video content to share with visitors that depict a wider audience with varying abilities. And Ablor, a company that focuses on this, provided training and taught us best practices for creation of audio descriptions. We connected with several community partners who have prioritized accessibility to help them to be more welcoming to all. But you don't have to take our word for it. We have some partners on the next video. We would like you to hear from them.
Can you turn the volume up? Is that possible? Thank you.
I think a lot of times when people live with disabilities in cities, they start to feel like their world just shrinks. Because let's say you're going to go to the post office somewhere, and you get to the post office, and they have an ADA accessible parking spot. You pull up, but you get to the front door, and you can't get through their front door because there's no accessible way to open the door. So you're struggling with a heavy double-glass door. So what I appreciate is when I come to downtown Albany, any of the places that I might want to go, where I want to shop, where I want to visit, that they have a way for me to be able to get through their doors easily. And so sometimes that also translates into, let's say there's an event. We hold concerts at the park, and you get there, you find your parking spot. Well, let's say the accessible parking lot is two blocks from the event. How does a person get there by themselves? So those are the kinds of things that I think and I enjoy and appreciate that the Albany Visitors Association is helping to bring more into awareness. We're super excited to welcome everybody back to Montithew River Park. It's been closed since March of 2022, and we're just thrilled with all the ADA improvements that have come about. There are quite a few. One is that the park has been re-greated. Back when it was built, we didn't have ADA standards, and so many of our sidewalks were too steep for folks who use mobility devices. So now we have two separate ways for people to be able to go on down to the stage. Our stage has access for folks who use mobility devices, and it's just absolutely stunning. We have better opportunities for lighting and for sound so that everybody who is coming to our concerts has a better opportunity to hear and see what is going on. Other than that, some other great features, we have a curbless plaza. Vendors will be able to set up, and folks who have all sorts of needs will be able to access that area, interact with our vendors, then themselves, without having to worry about curbs or uneven surfaces to possibly trip on. We're also really excited, as now with the new stage, we also have an expanded wheelchair viewing platform. The Rotary Club of Albany put in our initial one, and we were super excited about that. But now we're able to accommodate over twice as many folks with mobility devices and who use walkers. We're really proud that we're able to make sure that more and more people have wonderful views of our stage for all of our events moving forward. We're really excited about our playground, as it is our porn play, kind of soft surface, which means that it's curbless, which people can roll onto. And we're just really excited that this opens up an opportunity for folks here at Monti. Additionally, in the past, we had an old restroom that was two multi-stall, two-gender restroom, and we changed that. We've come through, and we've actually made four in
We've come through and we've actually made four individual stalls, gender neutral, and two of which are ADA accessible, as we want to make sure everybody's able to come on out, be comfortable, and experience this new park. And lastly, we are out here on our beautiful pier that has been redone. In the past, this would have been a challenge for anybody with a mobility device or had mobility challenges to come on out. This is actually my favorite spot in all of Albany as it's quiet, you get to come out, hear the birds, take a look at the water, and I mean the beautiful view behind us of the two bridges. It is very much Albany. So we're really thrilled that the new boardwalk is out here and the new pier so that everybody will be able to come on out and take a look at what Albany has to offer.
There are a lot of the businesses in and around Albany have made accommodations for people. I mean, it's not like you feel like if you were to go in and you'd be singled out and you'd have to ask the owner to switch up a lot of things inside. And so I think that's greatly appreciated, too. Again, that idea of universal accessibility where you're not feeling as though you're putting somebody out by asking them to make accommodations.
Hello, my name is Wendy and I'm at the carousel and I want to tell you about some of the things that a lot of people don't know about. We have access to our automatic doors. The other thing is, is that for those people that on the sensory friendly days, we can bring the lights down, the music down, and we also slow the carousel down so that it's not frightening to some people. And the other thing we do have available is earplugs. You can just ask the operator of the carousel and they have them there. We have wheelchair accessibility. Bring a wheelchair in and you don't even have to get out of it. They can lock it in and you're safe to ride. We just like to have the carousel accessible to everyone so that everyone can come in and have fun. One of the things that a lot of people don't know is we have an elevator here, so every room in every part of the building is accessible. Our bathrooms are also ADA compliance and we have other amenities like our drinking fountains and so we just have something for everyone. You know, we're trying to build an environment for everyone, even for our volunteers, so they can come and even with disabilities can come here and have a wonderful place to feel like they're part of the community and they're part of us.
We want everyone to feel like they're a vital part of the community and that they're not left out or that there's so many barriers for them when they come or go somewhere that it stops them and then they're living at home and with nowhere to go and no way to be socially active or actively volunteering even in the community. I mean, people have so much to offer and there's so much talent in people who are stuck in their homes and unable to access things. So let's remove those barriers. Let's make, you know, life more enjoyable in our community and our people more vital and remove barriers.
The YMCA playground is adaptable for all different kinds of kids and families. Specifically, we have a swing that you can roll on, somebody who is in a wheelchair, so they get to enjoy the fun of the playground as well. We have a wall that is braille, so kids can come up and put their fingers over and it goes through the alphabet. Our turf is designed for kids who have cochlear implants, so when they go down this slide, they collect a lot of static. The turf is made to absorb that static, so it's a lot easier on the kiddos who have cochlear implants. Our slide is also adaptable for kids who are in wheelchairs. It doesn't have steps. It has canvas and ropes where they can pull themselves up and that they can still get to enjoy going down the slide. It's very inclusive to all families. We have different hours here for the playground where it's community hour, so families who don't necessarily have a membership get to enjoy it, as well as families have memberships, they get to have special times that they get to come in and enjoy the playground as well. The playground has a lot of different activities for kids who need a lot more support with sensory play. The turf, the activities, it's very inclusive to all families, as well as a merry-go-round that they can also participate in if you're in a wheelchair. Our goal at the YMCA is to make sure that all families feel included. We have a number of different things throughout the facility and as we continue to grow and expand with our YMCA, we strive to make sure that all families are feeling included and welcome when they come in.
So what I appreciate when I go out in Albany are places that are forward-thinking. They're not only embracing the ADA, but they're also thinking about universal accessibility. So what does that mean? Universal accessibility, it means that it's not just fulfilling the ADA law, you're also making it open for everyone. If we make things universally accessible, we invite the whole world to participate.
Brilliant.
We really liked the way that turned out and we had actually asked for a three-minute video, but our partners had such important things to say and they said it so well that the videographer was like, I can't cut this. So I'm sorry that it was nine minutes, but I love that it's nine minutes because we have a lot to tout about. This causes a ripple effect, too, with awareness. Wendy told you during the video about the sensory friendly ride they have on the first Wednesday of every month. Because of demand and interest, they're now going to have that every Wednesday, the sensory friendly ride every Wednesday starting in June. So that's a positive thing. We also have applied for another grant from Travel Oregon. We won't find out until June, but it is to put automatic doors in 12 locations throughout Albany and, fingers crossed. But in the meantime, the Albany Visitors Association has applied for and received the tax-exempt status as a 501(c)(3) charitable organization. And that is specifically to improve public accessibility to historic buildings and businesses in the Albany area, to educate people about the history importance of these buildings and to support the preservation of these important historic structures. And so if that doesn't come through, then we may have some other sources and we're going to keep trying. So thank you so much for your time and your support.
So I would like to say, I was in one of the videos, but I was in my office last year, right after we opened it, the park, and I have a client, I've been her agent for like seven years, and she saw my car parked and she knocked on my door and she came in and she gave me a hug because her daughter's been in a wheelchair almost all her life and she'd never been to the piers. And so it was one of those moments that was like, she said, thank you, and she hugged me and she left. But it was a mother-daughter moment for them as a family to connect and enjoy it together. So it was wonderful, the park coming together like that. So it was really great. Counselor Newton, please.
I was curious, were we going to add subtitles to that nine-minute video?
We have it on our YouTube site and we-
Automatically?
Automatically, yeah. There's subtitles and then there's also the alt text in the description.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's, it's really great to have this video. You know, it's, it's wonderful for people in Albany to be able to see all of this because I feel like this is stuff that, that people that live here don't even know. So not only is it a great tool to be able to share, obviously with the people that live here, but it's something we can all freely share and have that disseminate into people who don't live here and they can see, you know, see this and know that they can come to Albany and truly, you know, experience it and their whole family can. So it's a, it's a wonderful tool to spread, you know, this, this really cool message, both to the people who live here and to the people who don't.
Counselors, any other comments or questions?
I don't know.
Well worth nine minutes.
I don't know if you guys know what the Enchroma glasses were. I saw you were kind of going, you know, what is that?
Please share.
So it's, it's really interesting. I don't know exactly how it works, but for people who are colorblind, there are these glasses that if you put them on, it takes a couple of minutes to adjust, but it will let them see the world as though they were not colorblind. And they are really expensive and so it's great that we have those available for people. It's a really cool tool.
One of the things we learned is that apparently 1 in 200 women are colorblind and 1 in 12 men.
So if you want to find out, come down to the Visitors Association. We'll, we'll figure it out.
Wow, that's great news. Great to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Next on tonight's agenda is public comment. Public comment is a time for Albany residents to speak and for the city councils to listen. The council won't discuss topics or make decisions during the public comment, but will take comments and requests under advisement. Speakers are limited to three minutes and must follow the council's rules and reserve the same standards of decorum. If you're unable to do so, they will be asked to step down from, take a seat in the audience for the rest of the meeting. When you get to the microphone, please give your name and state whether or not you live in the city of Albany, Oregon. First up is Lisa Grado.
Good evening and thank you. I'm Lisa Grado, the Executive Director of the Albany Downtown Association, and I'm going to do a quick downtown update for you. I hope I don't steal anyone's thunder, but the Albany Downtown Wine Walk is set for Friday, May 2nd. That event is much anticipated each year. It is put on by the Rotary Club of Albany and there will be 22 wineries at 22 locations throughout downtown. Tickets are just $20 and include entry to the event, a wine glass, and five tasting tickets. The hours are from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. Tickets are available at the Albany Visitors Association through May 2nd, where you need to pay in cash or check. And then the advanced ticket holders will have an express line at the event. And of course, there are event day tickets available and they're in the bank lot, which is where the former Wells Fargo lot. So we're very excited that that's returning as it has in previous years. So that'll be a fun day. If you didn't notice, not only did the farmer's market start, but we now have a artisans market called the Albany Artisans Fair Market, and it launched also on the 19th and it's adjacent to the farmer's market. So starting out with just a few booths, but excited to have that additional draw to delight locals and visitors alike. Our newsletter this month is a second part of our legacy businesses. We wanted to highlight some people who'd been around for a little while. So Emma Downtown has been around 25 years. There's a nice write-up about all the things that they've done for our community. And Jordan Jewelers, 32 years. And if you're not aware, Brad Jordan is semi-retired and Sam Byburn is the new owner and has been there for years. So you might go down and say hi. We also highlighted in our volunteer spotlight this month, we highlighted our Mixology Madness volunteers. Many of them were from Altrusa and we truly appreciate their help. We also had an article on living and doing business in downtown Albany. Many may not know that our website includes listings for residential as well as commercial rental and properties for sale. So if there's someone looking to be part of the downtown in a more live and work here way, those opportunities are listed. And there's some Oregon Historic Preservation Grants open to building owners, so if anyone has interest in that, they could check with us. And it doesn't go through us as the other grants do, but we're always happy to lend a hand. So thank you again and the hanging, the mom flowers go up this Sunday and then the hanging baskets will go up soon after.
Thank you, Director. Really appreciate it. Are you leaving a copy of the downtown book? Oh, she's not, okay, great. Thank you. Next up is Alex Rice. I like the first name, really cool.
Thank you. My name is Alex Rice. I live within Albany city limits. I'm over in the Hackelman District in Ward 1. First and foremost, Mayor Johnson and members of the council, thanks for hearing me out today. I wasn't able to make either of the public hearings about it, but I wanted to talk about the climate-friendly areas and walkability standards ordinance. More than that, I wanted to express my vehement support for this ordinance. First and foremost, I'd like to thank Counselor McGee for her comments about being forward-thinking in Albany and meeting the needs of Albinites going into the future. And I'd like to thank Counselor Smith for her comments about density and densification being used to protect farms and forests and other green spaces. I think that's super important. As far as I can tell, this, this mandate, this initiative is intended to reduce carbon emissions by reducing the necessity of driving to get your needs met as a citizen in the state of Oregon. But I really want to focus on the myriad of co-benefits to this kind of dense development. At its core, improved walkability and access to transit means less time in cars. This is safer, there's a lot of statistics I could quote about that, but, but what I like to emphasize is the most dangerous place to be a child is inside of a moving car. Communities where people are able to walk and bike and get around in non-motorized means also tend to be healthier. Density also means a better sense of community. That it's a big quality of life improvement, but I also want to emphasize that it really helps with safety. And a good example of that, I live on Geary Street down near Bowman Park. At the end of Geary Street is the Banks Apartments and anybody who lives in that neighborhood will attest, before the Banks were there, Bowman Park and the sort of liminal space that was that open field were hotbeds of criminal activity. With the Banks there, you know, you have a ton of residents moving in, that's, that's eyes on the ground, basically, and, and sort of criminal mischief has declined significantly in that area. As Counselor Smith pointed out, it protects green space. I think it's also important to emphasize that, you know, the way that this ordinance is worded, there's no funding being put towards development, there's no funding being put towards housing or grocery stores or any of the things that we want, it's simply removing barriers. So this is an example of deregulation and getting different kinds of development into this town and mixed-use development, it really enhances personal choice and enhances the ability of people to live in the city of Albany in different ways. The whole city is not going to be a climate-friendly area, it's designated zone, so there's, you'll still be able to live in single-family homes if that's how you choose to live, but if that's not how you want to live, this is going to help bring about better choices. I have a ton to say about this, but I'm running out of time, so I'll leave it with that. Thank you.
But you have comments you can leave with us, we can read them, okay? I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and your comments. Next is Billy McGregor.
Hi there. I'd like to start with saying I support Counselor Smith's point that city land should be put to better use than subsidized parking, especially parking that does not earn profit for the city and in the instance of hill and water may be a direct harm to the public and was never promised for that use. I am also here to support opportunities for the city to allow infill and conscientious densification. I especially want to support making ADUs more affordable. Lastly, our city has great multi-use trails, Perry Winkle and Dave Clark to name two. I'd like to voice my support for future off-road network paths and connecting our current paths in more meaningful ways. Also, my wife would like me to advocate for more comprehensive and better street lighting in the Hackelman District. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad Dennis, I see you, there you are.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Counselor. I'm Brad Dennis. I do live in the city of Albany and I'm also the Chair of the North Albany Neighborhood Association. Two weeks ago, when, when I was here, I mentioned that I'd been interviewed and gave a tour to a reporter from the Statesman Journal and I suggested keeping an eye out on the paper to, to see that article. It did come out on Sunday. If you were to go to the Statesman Journal website and search for the word unintended consequences, you'd be able to find that article. It was talking about House Bill 2138, which deals with middle housing. We also heard last week on the climate-friendly areas, it was mentioned that there's Oregon administrative rules that are guiding this and it was mentioned 660.012-0310 to Section 320. So I went home and looked at that and actually the regulations don't stop at 320, it goes clear to 325. And it's important to read that last one because it talks about transportation systems that need to be in place in the climate-friendly areas. And as you know, I spoke at the Public Carian two weeks ago asking that a North Albany site be removed from the plan. Well, if you, if you read on- Well, if you read on through on Section 325, which was beyond what was mentioned was included, you'll see that it talks about highway impacts, and it talks about quarter-mile within a ramp. I assume that Spring Hill and North Albany Road, where they intersect Highway 20, could be considered ramps. I just encourage you that if you vote on the Climate Friendly Areas that you can assure me that you've read this section and that you've read the county or the city highway impact study that would be appropriate for the North Albany site. So I'll leave it at that. It was some good information in there. I think that if you do vote on that, that you should take a look at that last section. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. So, and with that, next on tonight's agenda, next on tonight's agenda is ordinances. Second reading of Climate Friendly Ordinance areas. Let me go here. For Walkability Standards, Ann Catlin. And there's an ordinance guide. So, Ann, are you going to speak a little bit on that? Is she not here? Do you have any additional information for us? So...
I'm available if you need me when you get to discussion. I'll just be back there.
Okay, thank you. Will the city attorney please read the ordinance a second time and title only?
An ordinance amending the City of Albany Comprehensive Plan, which was adopted by ordinance number 4836, and the City of Albany Zoning Map and Albany Development Code, which were adopted by ordinance number 4441 and adopting findings.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
I move we adopt ordinance number 4836.
Second.
Would the council would like to discuss this before we do anything?
Yeah, yes, yes. I would like to discuss this. I know that we've had a lot of pushback from North Albany. We've had a lot of pushback about the historic district. I read through the written testimony from Cameron Settlemeyer, and I reached out to my appointee on the Landmarks Commission to discuss that. I also reached out to my appointee on the Planning Commission, also spoke with Mr. Settlemeyer about this. And I am inclined to agree with his testimony and his written statement about the intense development and that could happen in our historic district. That this was not brought before the Landmarks Commission is really interesting and concerning to me that it's something that can greatly affect our historic district, and it was not brought before our Landmarks Commission, which deals with historic areas. So I just wanted to say that I'm really opposed to Site A, the downtown CFA. So I know that if we eliminate that from this plan, we would still be within the required capacity of the 8,861 units. If we do that, I don't think that would be an issue with the downtown CFA.
So, thank you for that.
Yeah.
So, Ann, was there a requirement for the ordinance to go before the Landmarks Commission? I didn't see that in there. And Landmarks does with buildings, not correct?
Yeah. No, there's not a requirement that these kinds of legislative actions go to landmarks. Now, I mean, I do appreciate that thought, but we have members, some of the members from Landmarks Commission were on our Interested Parties list. And when we first did the broad public outreach to identify areas, we did get quite a bit of input from residents. And also, I did a presentation to Friends of Historic Albany, and we removed one area that was proposed in response to that. And, you know, typically, these kinds of actions would go to the Planning Commission and to the council. Now, if we were amending Article 7, which is the Historic Overlay District, which are the standards that would apply to historic buildings, that would go to the landmarks. So it's not practiced to bring, even if something may be happening in, for example, the Housing Implementation Plan Package of amendments, we didn't go to the Landmarks Commission about that. I mean, we can certainly start reaching out to them more or just having a work session and inviting them to the work session, but it is not a requirement, to answer your question.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Monagui?
So, the way I understand it is the Climate Friendly Areas in the downtown area isn't allowing anything that isn't already allowed. Is that correct? Other than maybe townhomes, I think?
Yeah, it's just townhomes right now. So the heights are not changing. So there was a slide that I didn't show in case discussion came up, and I've got a handout of it if you want. But the Lion Elsworth height is 60 feet. The height in the Historic Downtown Zone is 85 feet, but it's 65 feet in the Historic District, which is within the Historic Downtown Zone. A little bit of the Montith Zone is, covers about two blocks of the Lion Elsworth zoning, but otherwise, the Lion, sorry, the Hackman-Montith Historic Districts are outside of the Climate Friendly Area. So it's mostly just the Historic Downtown Zone, and then there are, again, just a couple of blocks that are in the LE Zone.
Right. And then, any building that happens, because this isn't building anything. This is just allowing, as one of our residents pointed out. Any building that would happen would have to go through the proper channels to make sure that, you know, especially if it's in the Historic District, does it go to landmarks? Is that true?
Yes, all new construction in the Historic Districts.
Right, so at that point, then it gets approved. That's when they get to look at whatever's happening in that area, if it happens. Because this doesn't do anything, it just allows for townhomes now.
Right. It does allow for townhomes. I mean, I brought that issue up, and I don't like that. I think it should be maybe a minimum density, but the intensity of development could occur today with, you know, mixed-use development up to 85 feet tall in the HD Zone outside of the Historic District. The secondary Climate Friendly Area has a maximum, we have to allow at least 50 feet. So, again, we were trying to look at areas that were close to transit, were walkable, and already allowed for most of the uses, and also very few changes to the base zoning.
So because of all of that, I just want to comment. Because of all of that, I am in support of keeping this Climate Friendly Areas. I like the idea of us having them spread out throughout the city in key areas. I think they're rightly, you know, chosen in the areas they are. So I am in support of all of passing this in with all of the areas.
I agree that some of these sites are really great for this. And a lot of them do have the adequate services that are required for residential uses. I don't think the downtown site does have adequate services for residential uses. Does the downtown proposed Climate Friendly Area have a grocery store? No. Does it have a drugstore? No. Does it have a school? No. Does it have a doctor's office or a dentist or a dry cleaner that's accessible to anyone who can walk within that area? It does have a dry cleaner?
There's a dry cleaner right over on Fourth Avenue and Fifth Avenue.
On Fourth Avenue, within the Climate Friendly Proposed Area?
I don't know where it is, but it's right downtown. I mean, laundry mats right there as well.
It's over Third, I think, but just on the other side of Washington.
Mm-hmm. Okay, it has a dry cleaner. It doesn't have anywhere to buy groceries or get a prescription filled or get an education that you can walk to. I don't see that as a good residential area.
So, I think we have a motion and a second.
I have a comment.
Go ahead, please.
I ask some question?
Sure. Well, she went first.
Okay, okay, Michael, you go first.
Well, yeah, I'm not so much on Section A. Counselor McLeod did a great job. I concur with her arguments. I was going to bring up Site C that we've heard about. But let me back up. You know, I was asked in the interim, you know, why is this, why is this before us? And I just think it's important to recap that this is an action coming out of a governor's executive order in which the governor directed various state agencies to produce rules, administrative rules, in various parts of the state in terms of this, what we have before us is coming from the Department of Land Conservation. This is their rule, and we are now, so, big picture, we're saying that zoning, we're leaving it to them. We have very little, we've had some degree that gave us, thankfully, some degree to adjust, but we're leaving it to them. And I said this two weeks ago, if this was an attempt by the city of Albany, by us, to do planning, I just don't think it would go this way. I think we'd have more discussion, and I think the outcome would be different. But we are forced with limited choices. And so having said that, that's where we're at. And I don't, Ann's perfectly right, as far as the downtown. The Article 7 is not affected of the Development Code. I understand all that. I think the correct terms would be, this puts pressure on the Historic District. This puts encroachment upon the Historic District, but it does not affect the zoning that exists there. An even greater, to an even greater degree, though, I think Section C, North Albany one, has significant traffic issues that would impact it. I mean, to accept this is to say, at some point, you're going to have to do a significant improvement at Highway 20 and Spring Hill. I mean, significant may underestimate the kind of change, and that comes with a ton of costs. And nothing in this, nothing in this anticipates that, has any way to deal with that. And, you know, we heard, on Monday, we went and met with the Benton County Commissioners, and we talked about some future, ODOT has all kinds of plans for Highway 20, and they're just sitting there. And they have financial challenges, too. So it's going to be, yes, significant regulatory changes, and the cost of which will be borne on current residents. And I cannot say that enough. And it's regulatory changes that may or may not come to pass. We can't tell the private sector what to do. But on paper, you're asking me, as a councilperson, to, like I said two weeks ago, to approve an Albany that frankly, I wouldn't recognize. And I don't think, when I ran for election, no one told me that seven-story buildings were their most important thing. Not in the least. And so to approve that now, I just can't. And so, but I'd like to move, I'd like to add my, can I amend the proposed ordinance? My amendment would be to remove Section C.
Counselor Newton?
Yeah, I know I touched base on this a little earlier at our last meeting, but what I'm concerned about is us losing control of the zoning in our Historic Downtown District. I do know that our historic homes are, and three districts are some most, four districts, I apologize, are some of the most intact in Oregon and actually on the West Coast. And I know it's a large draw for tourism. What I'm concerned about is, I do know that the governor's had other priority bills, and one was, had an amendment to remove the demolition review of historic structures. And if that were to happen in like a future session, would that supersede our own Historic Preservation Slant that we have with the landmarks review? I'd be comfortable with having this, the CFA go, move forward and go to the Landmarks Commission before coming back to us. I'd like to see it, especially for that site. So I'm just curious, like, how would this impact things down the road for our Historic Districts?
So, I've heard from all the councils, thank you.
I haven't had a comment.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you.
Ms. Drudge McGee, after you.
We've mentioned several times that there is concern about the number of housing units that are, there's that 8,000 number out there. That doesn't, there's no expectation that all of those units would be built in the Climate Friendly Areas. That's, we're talking about Greater Albany, aren't we? Okay, thank you.
Well, what it is, we have to have capacity for those units. There's no expectation that they would all be built there. And the capacity formula, and it did not include any of our Historic Districts or buildings, assumes that you're starting from scratch. It's just the way the formula was. So there really isn't the capacity, but the way the formulas work, it looks like there's more capacity than, because it essentially starts from ground up and assumes the tallest height. And the only area where there is a taller height, and actually, it's not affected, is the Heritage Mall area, the 14th Avenue, primary Climate Friendly Area. The zone art doesn't have a, the RC Zone doesn't have a maximum height, and the Community Commercial Zone would, where it's owned, Community Commercial would go from 50 feet to 85 feet. But otherwise, it's 50 feet everywhere else.
Three other things I wanted to mention. This is essentially an overlay.
That's correct.
That does not mean that anything is going to change. Things will change as change happens and as time goes on, but it does not mean wholesale destruction or a complete upheaval of the character or the look or the traffic patterns or anything. It's an overlay. It's a suggestion. It's a protection. It's a suggestion for where things could happen if someone wanted that. And those things that could happen are very limited. At some point, we are all aware of the odd intersection at Highway 20 and Spring Hill Drive, and we know something is going to have to happen there someday. We know that. Whether this happens or not, that's going to have to be fixed. That is, that's a fact. And the other thing I wanted to mention is the, we have had conversations for years about resisting mandates from Salem. And it's particularly galling, or can be, when it's an executive order from the governor. That just because it's an executive order or it's a bill that the legislature passes does not mean it's something that we shouldn't consider. It might be a good idea. Somebody came up with that idea, and it got this far. It might be something we should consider. In this case, I believe it is something that we should consider and an ordinance that we should adopt. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McGee, you already had an opportunity. I'm going to give it to Counselor McGee.
I concur with Counselor Monagui and Counselor Smith. That's all I have to say.
Sure, it's a discussion, and I have more to add to the discussion after what has already been spoken after I first spoke.
I hadn't called on her, and I was giving her the opportunity. That's all I was doing. There's no slight. I just hadn't called on her. Counselor McLeod?
So, to say that this does nothing is inaccurate because we have 300 pages that shows what it does. And to say that this really changes nothing does a disservice to the staff who's worked on this. So I do want to thank you for the hard work that has gone into this. I also know that were we to remove Sites A and C...
I also know that, um, were we to remove Sites A and C, um, from, from this proposal, we would still be within the required, um, capacity of 8,861 units, even on the low estimate, even on the low estimate of the other four sites, we would still be within that required capacity. So, I do think we need to, um, remove Sites A and C.
Counselor Monague?
Wouldn't that leave us with no sites in Ward 1?
I couldn't hear what you said.
That would leave us with no climate-friendly areas in Ward 1? Is that correct?
That is correct. Again, the base zoning allows for mixed uses. Um, I mean, it, there's transit, um, the overlay isn't gonna change much, um, honestly, it, because these uses, mix of uses can already occur. So, I, I, while I have the microphone, I did wanna just say regarding the 0325-660, um, Division 12 section that, um, Mr. Dennis brought up, Exhibit E includes findings about that and our transportation systems plan update, or new one, will, will be underway hopefully within a few months. But, um, the highway impact studies were done where the highway impact, where there were highways running through and mixed uses actually, in the long run, result in less traffic. I just wanted to make that point, but there is, there's quite a lot of findings around the transportation-related impacts. And we heard from ODOT, who did the highway impact studies and analysis. I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
I'll call the question.
So, we have?
I had another question. I didn't get my question answered. I was just wondering, how would this impact in the future?
So, was your question about if the governor were to no longer allow demolition denial, which is?
Yeah. And how, how, the, um, I'm not thinking about just like myself as a city council, thinking like down the road, would, does this inhibit, uh, the zoning that we're allowed to approve down the road? So, I, I really wanna?
We need to lobby this governor and the state legislature so that that doesn't happen, in my opinion, because I feel our historic resources are important. The climate-friendly area isn't going to have an impact on that issue. Um, I do think strengthening and, and evaluating Article VII standards and requirements to ensure compatibility for any new construction. Um, we don't actually have demolition denial right now in our code. It's something you might wanna consider adding, um, to strengthen that. There's only a stay to demolition for up to a year. Um, I, I'm not sure how to answer your question. I don't know if that will happen. I think there's, um, some strong support for historic preservation and, um, I heard today in a, in a statewide meeting that, um, the league is making progress on trying to get the governor to cool it on housing changes. Let's just see what we've done, the impact already. Um, we're, we're catching up. You can't see all the impacts of the changes yet. I mean, and, and the changes that are in this session as well. So, um, starting to get some, um, I think some support because they're hearing from cities that we're, we're doing the best we can to accommodate, um, new housing. So, I hope that that issue might go away eventually, what you just raised.
Are we able to poll? Like, I, I really would like the landmarks commission to also weigh in.
So, the landmarks commission is, is charged with, uh, reviewing new development in the historic districts. And they will still get to do that, um, whether it's a new, um, you know, three-story building on a parking lot in downtown, whether it's got, you know, whether it's townhouses or, or multi-story building, they, they will do that. So, they get to weigh in on the development side. Um, typically, they don't, um, I mean, typically, we go to the planning commission. Each of you has an appointee to the planning commission to talk about long-range needs. And so, I didn't, we, I thought we addressed some of the concerns from the historic community when we removed one of the areas and honestly, I've only heard from a couple of people. And, um, some of those people were on the interested parties list and didn't reach out or with concerns earlier. It's just something that I hadn't done.
Thank you. Thank you, Anne. So, we had a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
Thank you very much. Could you please do a roll call? Counselor McLeod?
No.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor McGee?
Yes.
Counselor Newton Azor?
No, 'cause I wanna look at more review.
Counselor Thompson?
No.
Counselor Monague?
Yes.
Three to three?
Yep. Looks like three to three.
So, I appreciate the work the staff has done on this and I've read the packet and I've talked to people about this, other mayors dealing with the same issues. It, for me, looking forward, I had a 25-year plan for Albany and my vision, and I'm on year five of that. And I think this aligns with the long-term vision for Albany. And so, I'm gonna vote yes to pass this. And then, let's, what they're working on, putting things on pause for any new stuff coming down the pipe, I'd like to see us adjust accordingly to what we're doing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna do a bio break for five minutes, or 10 minutes. And at, be back here at 7:16 PM.
Today. So next on tonight's agenda is resolutions exemption from competitive bidding and special loan and library services. Eric Ikenoy, our director of library, library director, pages three twenty-six, twenty-three to three twenty-six in your packet.
Yeah, that kind of says it all. It's we've had contracts with OCLC for years. They're kind of the, in many ways, the only game in town in this for these services. And it's reached the point where they are above our price threshold for having to go out to bid, so.
So counsel, any questions?
I have a question, and this may be in the memo, but I may have forgotten it. Are other libraries in our, as Ed used to call it, the consort of, are do they pay into this contract as well?
They probably they pay separately.
Separately.
Yeah, so yeah, it's it's that would be one thing that we could look into as a consortium eventually is kind of sharing some of these costs.
Volume discount.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. But yeah, it's pretty much any library participates in OCLC almost in some degree.
It's a specialty service and.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Counsel, any discussion or questions of director?
I'd move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. I heard you, Counselor McGee. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Director. Best of my counsel's next on the agenda. I'm gonna start with Ward Two. Counselor Montague.
I have nothing.
Thank you. Counselor McLeod.
I'll be attending the League of Oregon Cities Spring Conference coming up. I'm looking forward to that. Also, this morning I was, or I'm sorry, not this morning, this afternoon, I attended the AAMPO Policy Board meeting where I was elected the vice chair, so thank you for that. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Steph Newton Azor.
Sure. First, I wanted to wish Matt Harrington a happy birthday. I know he's not here. He's probably out celebrating his birthday, but I just appreciate him and all the work he does, and I wanted to, his day is on the day of city council, so happy birthday. Number two, my, I was curious, I think we just passed the one-year mark from when we sold the Wells Fargo building, and I believe that that building was supposed to take only two years, and I noticed it hasn't even broken ground yet, and I was wondering if staff had an update.
Yeah, Mr. Lepman is still looking at the the option agreement, and Sophie will come back and bring you an update on it, but I would, Matthew Rutgers has anything, Sophie's not here this evening, so she can't comment on it, but if Matthew has something to add to that, I'd invite him to do that, but he is still considering his option.
What, I can, yeah, I mean, so back in February of 2024, we presented Mr. Lepman with a contract, and then we met with him finally, was it last December, when we had the meeting in here, Matthew, or something like, we met in December, it might have been even January this year, and we modified the agreement to an option agreement, and then I know Sophie sent that to him in February, and that's where we're at, so we have not received anything.
Is that standard practice to allow over a year to pass before someone signs a contract? So what is the option agreement, or what is going on with that?
Well, they, I could, I could, I mean, I could give a recommendation. I'm not sure if we would do it in, not in an executive session, but Matthew and I could maybe give you, yeah, it's ARA too, yeah, but I think Sophie, Matthew, and I might give you a, maybe we could have an executive session and tell you kind of where we think this ought to go. But yeah, we're still where we were when when you voted to.
Sell the property.
Sell the property. We don't have, yeah, we haven't sold it. We don't have money. We don't have a contract. We're in the exact same spot, so.
That's interesting. Thanks for the update. I had one other item I wanted to discuss, wanted to talk about something that's been impacting our city's public safety resources, and that's a large number of police calls coming from a small number of commercial properties. Most of these are large retailers, and they're generating hundreds of calls a year, everything from shoplifting to disturbances and trespassing. A lot of these are situations that could be handled by the businesses themselves with better staffing or store design or private security, but instead our officers are being asked to respond over and over to incidents that aren't emergencies, and every one of those calls means less time for proactive policing or responding to the kinds of emergencies that really require law enforcement. This kind of repeated demand puts a real strain on our public safety system and on our ability to provide fair responsive services across the city. Other cities have started tackling this. Some have adopted public safety impact fees or similar policies that charge high-call properties a fee when their call volume exceeds a set threshold. The goal is not to punish anyone, it's to create a more fair system, one where the businesses creating the most demand are also helping support the cost of the services they rely on. I'm sure you guys all know that our funding's limited because of Measure Five and Measure Fifty, so I feel like this might be a good thing to look at. What I want us to consider is something along along those lines here in Albany. Maybe we can set a threshold based on data and assess a fee when it's consistently exceeded, and maybe we could then structure the revenue to go partly towards police staffing and public safety improvements and partly towards community programs that also support safety like Parks and Recreation and Albany Library. So I wanted to ask everyone else here at counsel, would you be open to discussing this further, and would you be willing to have staff put together a draft or sample ordinance just so we can see what this might look like and talk through the options? I think, you know, looking more into this could be a smart forward-thinking way to support our public safety system, and I'm really interested in hearing what everyone else thinks.
Counselor Montague.
I think that's a fantastic idea. I brought up this concern when we voted to open the satellite office in in East Albany. My concern at the time was that we were supplementing the budgets of of large retailers, helping them avoid the cost of either redesigning or staffing appropriately with either security or just whatever they needed to do to protect their their property. So I I would be in favor of something like that. I appreciate you bringing it up and would love to hear what we have as far as ideas.
So I would like to add something to that. So you know the work I do with seniors. These assisted living, the independent living facilities constantly use our fire department and our EMS systems to help somebody up, and they're charging these seniors between seven, three and $7,000 a month, and they don't staff because they know we'll respond. So that's something I'd like to add to that, if you don't mind. Counselor, you got anything? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to echo what Counselor Montague said. I totally would like to give that the green light. I think it's a great idea to be pursued and to come back to us with some work done, but if you're asking me, yes, 100%.
I think it's a great idea. Go ahead, yeah.
Counselor McGee. Counselor McGee.
Yep.
You're all board?
Yep.
That leaves you, Counselor Smith.
I'll have to think about it. I am reminded of the the ordinance that we already have in place for false alarms, for burglar alarms at private homes and businesses. We do charge a fee for excessive alarms, excessive false alarms, when sometimes those systems don't work properly, and sometimes it takes an extra fee to get the attention of the person who owns the business to fix it. Beyond that, I I don't, I don't have an expert opinion yet, and so I'm not gonna comment further.
Thank you. Thank you, counselors. Counselor Thompson, you're next.
Oh, okay. Yeah, from my, I will be attending the LOC conference coming up, and I look forward to that as well. I just want to say, to get back to the discussion over the Wells Fargo building, I just want to be clear, I would like a discussion about that in ARA. I just want to make sure that didn't get lost in the discussion. And lastly, a personal note, I went to my daughter, we went to West Albany to, as she'll be an incoming freshman next year, and oh my God, has time flown. I can't believe it. I'm still shocked. And she went right to youth and government club, you could sign up for clubs, and she went right to youth and government, so someday there may be another Thompson following, following me.
Good. Okay, thank you. And then Counselor McGee.
Sure, just two things. I had a constituent reach out about her excessive water bill. I did send her the link to our website regarding assistance, so maybe to see if she qualifies. The other thing is today, the mayor and I participated with Oregon Black Pioneers and West Albany High School to do Oregon, what was it, Black History Walking Tour, which was really, really, really nice. Had an opportunity to talk to some youth, some who were in Jackson Street, some who were in West Albany High School, just to give them some background about what we do and get them involved in civic duty and introduce them to civic work. So that's all I have.
Thank you. And Counselor Smith.
Three things. I attended the Willamette Criminal Justice Council Executive Committee meeting today. I have served on that that council since I was first elected, and they've gone through some bylaws changes and so on, but today's purpose was to fill two positions on the board with representatives of organizations that deal with, that assist people who have had contact with the criminal justice system, and nonprofits that do that work, and also people who are involved with direct crime victim assistance. Interviewed three local nonprofits, and two will be forwarded to the Benton County Board of Commissioners for formal, a formal vote. I had a question from a constituent about the potential traffic impacts of the the large apartment developments on Geary at Queen, and I, if anybody can address that, their concern is about congestion at 21st and Geary in particular. That's a stop sign controlled intersection now, and and then, well, at the more traffic at the intersection period. I know a lot of those apartments are one-bedroom apartments, and I would think that that would not overly impact traffic, but I'm not the expert there. The other thing, then they're on transit routes, so it's, if, the other thing I want to say, let's let's end on a on a happy note. I am enjoying my bed of Hub City compost. I planted it last weekend with marigolds and 10 different varieties of heirloom tomatoes and a few herbs, and I can almost watch things grow if I hold still. It's been astonishing. So it's a great product. We have plenty more where that came from, just putting in a plug there for Public Works. It's good stuff.
That it?
I'm done.
Thank you. I just had a few things. Again, LOC, I'm scheduled to go down to the Oregon Cities Conference next week, all things, if all things line up properly. And so we are also the Public Safety Levy Campaign, Measure Measure Twenty-two, Two-O-nine.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you. We did film some videos, and Rebecca Bond was gracious enough to do the filming, but one of the things that we did add to those videos, we had a person, ASL interpreter, Rose Heth will be doing the interpreting for those videos, and I'll be asking Counselor Thompson, Counselor McLeod, Counselor McGee, and Counselor Montague also, so I'm working on her schedule. I'll be working with Rebecca Bond to set those videos up, but we'll be, I sent out the videos, I think, Counselor Newton has them, Counselor Smith has them, Kevin, Kevin, former chief, fire chief, Kevin Kreitman has them, so we're just getting the word out on your social media, and so if you do see it pop up on your feed, please share. And also yard signs are available. Counselor Newton has done a great job of getting that stuff together, and also the flyers and door hangers.
Yep.
Are available as well, so please see her about that. I do have some with me in my car as far as the yard signs, but let's get them out, let's get this levy reinstated or renewed, and so we can stop worrying about that this year and get onto something else. I did attend the Can Cultivate Black History Tour of Albany, and the young people had questions. Counselor McGee is the best speaker. She just handles it, so that's her professionalism and a great speaker for us and representative of Albany. And Oregon Mayor's Association info where mayor winners were chosen. Matthew Harrington being out has, Matthew being out has kind of slowed my announcement of the winners. We haven't contacted the schools or the winners yet, but and you'll see them in a future city council meeting presenting to us, but he did submit those winners to state, and so we'll have two young people. The high school didn't do much this year because of what's going on in their world, but we have an excellent fourth and fifth grader coming, and a middle school are coming to present their findings and their their vision to Albany, and it's really a fun process, and the kids did a lot of great work. If they were the mayor of Albany, Oregon, this excites me every year. And with that, I will turn over to the city manager, his report.
Thanks, Mayor. And based on the council's consensus that was just expressed, we will come back to the council after looking at excessive calls for service from institutions and an evaluation of that problem, and bring back some data and options, including an evaluation of Counselor Newton Azor's proposal. And the only other thing is that I will be with you at the League of Oregon Cities Conference Thursday and Friday of next week.
Thank you, Peter. Is that it?
That's it.
The city council will now meet in executive session to consult with council concerning legal rights and duties of public body in regards to current litigation and or litigation likely to be filed in accordance with ORS 192 dot six six zero subsection two, subpar抛 two, subpar抛 H. Representatives of the news media and designated staff and other persons shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other participants must exit. Online audience members will be moved into a waiting room. When the council returns to open session, staff will readmit those remaining in the waiting room to rejoin the meeting. In-person audience members must leave the council chambers and wait in the hallway. When the council returns to open session, staff will open the doors, and you can rejoin the meeting. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any other deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision will be made in executive session. I now recess to executive session at 7:34 PM. Reconvene the meeting. Counsel, we have an idea, what we want to do?
I'll move to proceed with litigation as discussed in executive session.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you very much, counsel.
Thank you.
Thanks. So now, item 11 on your, on your agenda is, our next meeting is Monday, May 12th at 2025, oh, excuse me, 2025 at 4:00 PM for a work session. The next is Wednesday, next council meeting is Wednesday, May 14th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.